... President Collins. You don't want to come to my... Come, Mr. Sibley, please come to the microphone. I'm going to do a prayer that I feel is appropriate. I want you to turn back around into the way of the year. You try to keep it in my space. Let's think of more of Stalin here. More of Stalin. I thank you. Good for coming to pray and thank you for the number of hours. Thank you for all the investment you have done to our community. We realize that without you we couldn't have accomplished anything. For God's sake, this must be the duty of the number of people. For, I pray for Brooklyn, for Brooklyn, you've been there, I've been here. I pray for you again, and we're not saying that, but we realize that you've been involved in that. I pray for this country, this state, this town. I pray for Tony, I pray for Paul, I pray for this family. I pray for President, I pray for our community, and these two, for... If we're leaving you here, you know, and we're allowed to hear what control is coming to control everything. For, at the end of the day, it's very important.
I pray for the nation's to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, if he's coming along.
Mr. Michael Cheeto?
Here.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Chris Hall?
Here.
Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Here.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Here.
Dr. Chrissy Oakland?
Here.
President Lewis King?
President, you're on the phone. You're a motion approved in justice case.
I don't know.
You know, Mr. Jones said it was a good credit. In his question, request for an order. You know how to pray?
Ah.
You're a father, what's your duty? The first order been all did, adapting this from the court system, couldn't couldn't get it. I feel that way.
My bad.
But, Mr. Jones, I continue, in his question, request for an order. You know how to pray?
Ah.
You're a father. They can't even do it. We couldn't pray for this, if you could live in order, in thirteen one nineteen, wrote for Gerald Stent. Could they like you?
Good evening, Congress. All right, um... Yeah, uh, I've been up here last year. And, um, thing about it is, like I was saying, I'm just asking for an extension. And the thing about it is, the job, like I said, the job that I was working for, it wasn't doing too much. But now I went back to my old job. And I was just asking for an extension. I know things are hard out here, and I'm doing the best I can. And I'm just coming to ask. It's possible. Yes, it's possible that I have another extension.
Mr. Sibley, you had one year. You can't have life here, and you asked for another year. You received another year, and now you're asking for another extension?
Yes, it's the third.
The third extension?
Yes.
So what's the prayer you're gonna do?
I'm just gonna...
You're ready? You're ready for prayer? That's right.
Generally, we don't do that, 'cause you put after two extensions. I mean, I've never seen that before, probably, either, so, um...
So what's the prayer that you're gonna do?
You've been given? Um, I'd like to substitute most. I would, uh, I would give you three months. I mean, he's had two. And both of them two years. I'll, I'll, I'll just say three months to get back in. I will agree with our second name.
You want to discuss?
And let me, let me ask this. At the end of three months, if he does not, can he come back and ask for another extension? Or at that point, we have to do whatever we have to do?
Well, I'm gonna say to you that if this here comes, that after this, I'm not coming back. I mean, I'm tired of wasting our time, and I'm tired of this time. And the thing about it is, like I said, I might get one very good set I can. So, I mean, I understand the whole thing about it. I understand all of it. And like I said, you know, the job that I was trying to work on, then I'm doing it. So I had to go back to my old job. And, um, I'd like to just say, thank you more than...
You're discussing, request for an order. Are you there?
Ah.
You're a father?
Ah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank that, you know, we got to ride creek, right? We have a public hearing, so what's the prayer you're gonna do?
Sir.
You have a question? Request for an order. You know how to pray?
Ah.
You're a father?
Ah.
What you're gonna do? Request permission to play additional mobile home in private, ten month, five, ten more months. Wave their house. Can you like me?
I'm trying to see if there's any way possible to put a second hand in my ride.
If customer, you know, only we can put a second home on private, you have to still be glad to private.
I think you can do it under hardship, though.
Thank you.
I think you can do it under hardship without some, uh... Uh, that if you have, like, a mother or a father, they needs... Is it for kids or something, or something like that? I was actually trying to get my son somewhere to stay, and I thought maybe him, give him an old home, and I was gonna do it. How much property do you have, Joe?
Half acres.
It's a half acre, I have, I have middle of something, everybody know, but I do was on the road, good door, really. What's, what's the ordinance say?
He gotta have twelve thousand five hundred first. He doesn't have. And that's pretty accepted, right?
What's your...
He doesn't have.
Is there some extent where you say, "After you have to do that, is this gonna be permanent, or it's gonna be something temporary"?
Well, right now, he don't have any other deal. I was just, I'm trying to get him, I'm getting a new home, and I was just gonna make him be there. Until he can get, do something better than, if I have to, I tear down later with a, a old home.
I mean, if we have grandparents as well, I don't know what's the prayer with you.
Is there enough room?
I got some room, so, ah...
To match our, to, to match our ordinance or stuff?
I don't know.
Well, five, you say not that year?
Not there.
And, I mean, there's other homes in the neighborhood, and they swallowed their minds, and they got, they got two or three houses on the front.
What's your best on this here, from normal?
Yeah. We haven't branded anybody like that since all that, since all this new, uh, building stuff that's on the board.
What's the prayer you're gonna do?
Can you grant the guy, and give him a year, and then come back?
Yes.
You're gonna have to have a reason. If you break a, grant him a variance, you're gonna have to have a reason.
Reason or do it?
And you need to study it on the record. What's the reason for the variance?
Well, actually, I was, like I said, I was trying to get my son somewhere to live, and he don't have one, he don't run a deal. He, uh, he just came home from prison, and I was trying to get him somewhere to live. I was trying to get a new mobile home myself.
I still tell him, if you're the law, you're the law. You're not a harsher, you're not a harsher person, you know, I'm saying, if you claim you're bad. I still tell him, you don't have to say you're a real man.
Well, is there any way I can just use that, just get about that, and just use that mobile home for storage, and put another mobile home on the property?
It's still too small.
It's still too small for two mobile homes. I think the only way you're gonna be able to do it, and I don't know how to get wrong, is a replacement in time, and you can put the mobile home out.
Totally right.
See, but the problem with that, I, the mobile home that's there, since the mobile home that was there, I built over and add car portion, this, I don't have the money right now to do all of it. Because, like I said, I built over the mobile home, and add car portion, it, this, this gonna cost a lot to do it.
What's your prayer?
I just thought, so you got what you can do, if the bits are small.
I mean, I know there's no re, the, the variance, to, to give a variance, it's, to give a hardship, it has to be an obligation or something like that. So we can't use that. I don't know if there's any other reason, other than hardship, that... I, uh...
Ladies and gentlemen, East Village, United Parish Police Jury. My name is Jessica Joseph, and I stand before you today to present my case, an important matter that pertains to the utility connections, specifically electricity services on the property under my ownership. I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to address this, and invite you to express my concerns, however I must, bring to your attention that there are some discrepancies in the information provided to me. And I hope that we can clarify these issues on behalf of all parties involved. In my conversations with the Permanent and Building Department, I was led to believe that there was an ordinance mandated that the signatures of all heirs for utility connections on the property, um, that were required for the property in question. However, when I sought out to locate the specific provisions within the ordinance, I was told that it could not be found and may be outlined in the organization's policies and procedures. On several instances, I respectfully requested access to the complete document containing the policies and procedures that govern the utility connections within the jurisdiction, and any relevant information related to the aforementioned ordinance and details regarding when the policies and procedures were officially implemented. I've yet to receive the documentation to reference, and the subject and information has raised concerns about the transparency and consistent application of regulations. I must also point out that I have successfully demonstrated my ownership of property to several departments within the parish without any issues. In those instances, I was able to get water services, nine one one communication clearance, and a new sewer system installed on the property without requirements of all heir signatures. This inconsistency in the application of the ordinance, which may not even exist in the ordinance itself, raises further questions about the fairness and legality. Therefore, I respectfully request that the East Village, United Parish Police Jury consider overriding the stance taken by the building and permanent departments, which consists on requiring the signatures of all heirs for utility connections, even though the existence of such requirement ordinance is unclear. This decision based on uncertain information and elusive ordinance language has hindered the ongoing utility connection process, and it, um, and it is my belief that it should be reconsidered in the interest of fairness and property rights. I understand the importance of the matters that you all oversee, and I am hopeful that you all can assist with utilities. Thank you.
In the past, you were heir privately, every heir have to sign off, every heir get you to the property. Mobile home, put all the shit in there. You know, one, two, three, four, say, I hope everybody have to do the whole part that I can do.
Okay, is there somewhere that I could reference that? That was my initial question, and just so one for any Leo or counsel that I would need to seek out. And also, my question is, how was I able to obtain all the other services within the parish, and then get stuck here at this last moment with utilities? I am just doing an RV, as, I'm not putting a permanent structure on the property or anything like that. There's a service pole there already, I just want to connect electricity.
You know, one forty-six of the property?
I'm sorry?
One forty-six of the property?
No, please, that is correct. It is in ownership for the property.
Mr. Winkle, can you elaborate?
Sure. So, I got an environmental approval, um, on a mobile home. And obviously, couple mobile homes on a piece of property already. Approved ownership that she gave us. She has an undivided one quarter interest of the donors' one slash fifty-sixth. So, I brought this to the health unit, and they obviously just saw her name, and really looked at ownership, so... I can't speak for any other entity. So, that's just what was always on the pass, obviously, that's what I inherited, you know?
So what was she need to do, go back to the health unit?
Uh, no, she, we gotta get permission from the heritage.
Always, always.
Because it's undivided, so no specific says, "Hey, my piece is this right here," or "That's not the set," specifically.
It's undivided. Does she have one fifty-sixth? Close.
How many years is that?
Fifty-six.
My question, or what I'd like to bring in, in speaking with my lawyer party, you know, going through this process, I was, I was told that, though it may be whatever portion that you all speak of of my ownership, it still does make being owner of the property, it's undivided interest, it has not been subdivided. And I was told that I can use the property as long as I'm not stopping anyone else from being able to use that, that property. And I'm not, I'm not putting any type of comment.
Don't you have to get them to agree, to allow you to use that piece of property? It's fifty-six people own thirty acres. Then you have to get all fifty-six people to agree that you could use the spot that you want to use. If I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah. I had my aunt who's fifty years old.
Hi, my name is Grace's brother. I'm the daughter of the less brother. Um, this is my niece. When we went to law, he did not tell us we had to go through all that. He said that we can, she can put her, um, RV on the land, as long as it's not nailed down, or concrete down on the ground. She can't do that. But as far as moving the RV out there to live on, he says, we should not have any problem. And we shouldn't have to get any other heir to stay that she can live with. My aunt that lived on the property, she passed. So I only have one aunt that's left. She lives in Georgia. Nobody wants to come down here, none of them. So I ask you why that she's willing to stay down here and live on the land. I don't see a problem with it. But if you, my aunt has someone else on the land already, that's not even family, that's using the land. And I feel that that's right to the, to deny her utilities to live on the land if someone else there, and they're not even family. So that's not true.
Mr. Corvus. Never, it's been a process every year, but all heirs have to agree. She can never give any of them from their property that she bought.
And she can use the property, it's not, it's not a question of whether she can use the property. It's whether a question that the parish is gonna allow her to have utilities on the property. And I think that's gonna require the other owners' consent to that.
That's it.
So if I get the joint, would be no problem?
They can have to get all of them. Is that correct, Mr. Corvus? Like, same with our registered status?
I think, no. No, we don't have no effect. My, no. When my grandmother passed two years ago, everything was none involved, but my auntie got it all, for good price.
But even with that being said, regarding my mom, don't, isn't there a special thing you have to do to live in the R V, anyway?
She told me it's change or use.
Yeah.
Change is not a problem.
It was all her name.
Now, just to get it straight, would she have to get this property subdivided also? It still would be just a...
Yeah, since they have to get it subdivided.
No, but it, okay. I just want to make sure.
I mean, the land just sitting there. I mean, please, I mean, at least let one of our family live there if they want to live there. I don't care how many go out there and live there, and live all they want, I know I'm not coming back out here. But if they want to live on here in the country, I'm all for it.
I want to take you there. I, I hate big teams, so put them in with the name. I, I don't believe in that, but the law say one thing, you have to buy it, I don't know.
I understand that.
For if you do the name, I guess I'm feeling, you should tell a question, and can do the name.
So, so do you think that, at this point, I would need time?
Uh, I need a, now that I've learned from all areas, given permission to have utilities on this piece of property?
That's it?
That's it.
Can they be taken?
That's a great question.
All of them.
You can?
Yes. I know all of them. He never mama got anything.
You can do that?
He wanted all, everything, on all of them.
All, all of them take is the signatures and that.
That's all, it's the signature.
And just get the signatures and get the signature. And if the dog was to go, you know.
Listen, you have to, you get all the things, they're golden.
No. The number?
Fifty-six. As far as the percentage of the amount of heirs?
Mobile.
Oh, ah.
Does your house affect, you gonna write that?
Uh, I think it will do affect records, but, uh... My last thing that I can say, I know that there was a concern, the main concern was the, you all being held liable for anything in the future. And if there was any type of way to do some type of agreement, and then it should all would not be held liable, if it be done legally, whether it be signed, I believe I saw an ordinance maybe that was done for tower communications that would be installed, where you all aren't held liable. Um, I, I feel that, as the, as the lawyer explained to me, that there, there could be a possibility, I don't feel that it is in a situation where a family member would have to sue, and they would have to get it subdivided and so forth, and that would be their responsibility. So there is that legal aspect that the state covers when it comes to heir property. In terms of you all liability, I feel that that could be, um, that could be rectified, and, and you all could find somebody to cover yourselves, and still allow, um, to use their property.
No, we totally get that, and, and you don't know how hard it is for us to sit up here and tell people what they can't do on their property, it's things. So with that being said, if we do it once, it sets a precedence, and we have to do that every single time.
Where's the precedence in the ordinance currently, right now? This is my question.
I'm not talking about the ordinance, I'm talking about a precedent of what the jury does. As long as I've been here, we always require the signatures of all the heirs, so it's not trouble on the backside. If it's covered up front, we know that it's not trouble for us on the back. So if we say yes to you without the signatures, then anybody that's got their property, whether they have squabbles or not, we have to tell them yes, because we set a precedence that you need to do it. And then if we don't, if we do for you and don't for the next, then we gotta put some work, because people are gonna sit.
And it does, if you should come back.
Yeah.
So in that case, had it ever been granted, then, if it has come back on you all, then?
Not, not, not on top of you.
No, no, no.
And, and, and like I said, just the signatures, and say, "Give them to Mr. Jeff, and then this goes away." It's not an issue.
For myself, I didn't have her with me at the time, so that seemed, like, not even possible in the terms of...
Yeah, conference, conference, I can take here, though.
Oh, yeah, we, I, I know all of them. Oh, yeah, I can get that.
If we do that, we'll tell you after.
Okay, let's do that. All right, thank you.
I'm calling Youngwood, gas, fifth, number one, go.
Exactly.
Go ahead. Okay. I'm calling for Youngwood, gas, fifth, number one, go. There you go, if we do for nine to five. We have three numbers, a top, there is a, we're supposed to point one, there's another, we have two, a lot, but, all of this.
I want to see.
So, little...
Come on.
So, this, um, Youngwood, he the first person that's appointed, so her term will be for one year until everything... So it will expire at the end of twenty twenty-four.
If for one, one term, it's going to come, we're standing the term, we're even, we're gonna come up. You want a special, in a favor?
Ah.
You're a father? So, can ever time for the business of student condition, you would have time? You know, I think that, I'm sorry, that's a mystery, yeah.
Yes, too.
You have a question? Request for an order. You know how to pray?
Ah.
You're a father? What's your question? This one, again, advertising, there are two benefits of the gas fifth, and then two more conditions. Every of Jerry Lacy, the gentleman, he's gone to move. He has to come up, to give, to the jury. And Mr. Dawson, Dawson's term is up?
Yes, Mr. Ryan Dawson's term will expire at the end of this year, and Mr. Arndt, um...
Has, has to withdraw.
Yes, and that...
For good reason.
Twenty twenty-seven.
And who's gonna pay?
Unexpired.
Little question. Have you discussed it? Is that it?
Oh, sir.
You want to pray?
Ah.
And a father, motion here. This one, dear Camilla, and stay up for this. Dear Camilla, I have one thing. As you know, she left her parents' times here. We have three top decision, don't, that we knew, and I knew that. Oh. Her husband, sideways. We, we, we knew a pair, you know, yeah. We keep the pair of grown men, yeah. So, please, they will return. Please go on, the both of these, the both. And I knew that, if you go on, you go for the next ten years, you go for ten years for a minute.
Well, what people need to realize, Mr. Lewis, and this is what our next, if the software tax doesn't pass, then we lose all garbage for the parish. So we would have to figure out a way to attach a fee to a order bill, left bill, and start charging for garbage pickup that way. And we don't want to do that. So, if this does not pass, garbage pickup will be all difficult.
Do I need them to pay a sales tax?
Yes, do sales tax.
My big order, what, what for? We're for healthy, we're for the same, we're right now, we keep the many days of the year, because, yeah, other company, I'm started, because I was living so, that's the one, thirty, ten years. Was it four years?
They've gone there in four years.
The whole one, same sale tax, with funds, parish.
We, 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 the power keep it there. So, you know, the pair of the whole, all this power, you were perfect, don't pass, you know, even if...
Yeah, the mission now is to give emergency on that one, too.
So, please, you would for folk, consider them to you. They can, they don't need that, and they can, they are new, I mean, just this minute. You're welcome, sir, you're fine, you're in for a serve, you deserve a brother, you... Thank you, I thought I heard that. You may, for senior, could, could, back to you.
I'll be, sir.
Finally, we, could for how?
Ah. Uh, I got a whole bunch of stuff. Uh, first thing, I'd like to make a motion to approve monthly invoices.
Um, sir. Because, request for an order. You know how to pray?
Ah.
You're a father? What do you wish?
Okay, uh, do I need to rescind my last motion? Okay. I'd like to make the motion to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from the offer fund. Okay, I'd like to make the motion to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from the offer fund over to the coroner's firm, and I can explain that. Uh, y'all remember last meeting, we made a motion to transfer a hundred thousand from the health unit, we could use the offer money, and we would rather use that, it's an easy report to get. So, it's just not for one, that's it. So, that's.
We've got a motion, something after two, there's a question, quick, is the order?
Ah.
In a poem, motion here.
Third thing is, I, I know everybody knows we had a meeting, uh, and the recommendation from the committee was to approve the health insurance renewal with Blue Cross Guard Insurance, and that is a motion. I say.
But it's a lead, can you discuss, question for the order, you know, a favor?
Ah.
In a poem, motion here.
Uh, next thing is recommendation to approve purchase of two thousand eighteen Nissan compact car boat for coroner's office.
I'd like to say, yeah.
Have your motion.
I'm just gonna say one.
We found out all the dimensions were fine? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, um, I got those again, yeah, he said it did, um, J R and myself.
Been in the link, whatever, I expect to do it side by side.
The question for the order, you know, a favor?
Ah.
In a poem?
Uh, last thing is recommendation to prepare a block back foot preventer on a hair commission, a blue repair present. That is a motion.
Have we got a price on that, too?
We already approved it. So, this should just tell me that no actions needed, but.
It was on the table, so, um.
So, we're good.
I would have to prove it.
Yeah, and how did it come?
Oh, I found Shannon, now, I would just want to see that.
I thought I got lost.
I did have one thing, um, I mean, the finding committee meeting, next week, maybe Tuesday or Wednesday, we can try to go ahead and get everything done, to look at it, maybe a little earlier, um, because Miss Jeffy's having some things, things going on, so maybe like five, maybe.
And, and y'all can pick the day, I find with that, as long as it's a long timeframe for me, but I would like to ask if Mr. uh, Mr. Jason can sit in, so we can discuss how much money he's gonna need for this upcoming budget for his part. So, just add him in our emails.
And we're going, probably what they approved, this, this will create.
Okay, one thing, uh, all those concerned, uh, about the roof, or those bridge that's out, we fixed up the channels and things, starting work, doing the work again tomorrow, so hopefully we can get that bridge, if it's possible.
Don't forget that, they come, they improve it, they.
I have one other thing, and I noticed this when I was coming in tonight, it's got someone that's going around stealing flop sign, I mean, they put it up, all, this whole pole and all, need to kind of be there and kind of keep eye out for it. I noticed two of them, I was coming to them, you might, these signs are gone.
The road sign is gone.
Yeah, stop sign.
It's very specific, cause the person automatically facing the sign.
It's a safety, that's true, yeah.
For nine new one, but.
And they're coming out from Little Road to Highway six, eight, that's dangerous, the person gonna steal stop sign, they just gonna keep going straight across. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. The other project, is it rigid, I have a vote?
I, I'd just like to ask, uh, Mr. Johnson, who's your partner, Matt Mans, and that stuff ever you take care of?
Not yet.
Uh, I would respectfully like to ask a couple of things like that, that I would like to see finished by the end of the year, if possible. Uh, I was noticing that the, uh, busy, move precinct gates open, need some posts on, if we don't have a gate, please we don't close, so, I, it's just a few of the things I'd like to see, to see.
Do, do.
You know, you know, also, you know, they gotta say about saying the gate.
So, we need a building and properties committee?
Well, and another thing, you had called me about that, and we never had it, so, you know, that's one of the things that.
You can call me, sir.
No, well, she, she had talked to me about everything, and just never could get it together, but, uh, I'll get to her.
Thank you, thank you. Good thing, though?
No, that's fine.
Another thing, now, this here.
Um, I have a few things, just to let you all know that the bus, the budget amendments are being monitored for the auditors' recommendations, and that's something that we just have to let you all, um, know. I have an invitation, reception honoring Diane Womack, Thursday, November ninth, twenty twenty three, eleven A M, till, three one two eight College Street, Jackson, Louisiana, seven zero seven four eight. The jurors are invited. Um, the police jury convention is scheduled for February twenty eighth through March first, at the Golden Nugget in Lake Charles, please check your email for room confirmation. So, all of the jurors that did tell me they would attend, your registration is done, and you should have confirmation for your room. In your binders, you will find a public awareness notice from Gas District Number Two. Mr. Lewis informed you all about early voting. Early voting is starting Friday through November eleventh, and, um, the first meeting in January, well, I may be too early on that, after you all approve the meeting date, hopefully it'll be January eighth, and the jurors will be sworn in here at five thirty. Um, and just the findings committee meeting, we can be scheduled for Tuesday or Wednesday, and next week, Miss Kelsey has something.
So, I have a garbage report from Waste Pro, I had a little trouble getting them for the month, for the months of August and September, but I got them. For the month of August, there were sixty four complaints for Waste Pro, and then I have forty complaints on my list, so, um, since most people are calling Waste Pro. Um, majority of those complaints in August were in Clinton and Jackson. And then for the month of September, for Waste Pro's list, I only have three complaints, and on my list, I have fifteen. So.
I do much of it, though. We have, we have just a complaint, we have.
And, and, um, that's something that I wanna address, too, because I want Kelsey to start kind of comparing, because we know sometimes she makes complaints to Waste Pro, we wanna make sure they've all gone in, I don't believe they're being logged in, but we are calling, and we get the complaints, we call them, we're calling up, emailing, tech, and letting you all know, or, you know, calling back up with the residents, telling.
Well, I got, I emailed all the complaints, and I also called Waste Pro.
And hopefully.
I just like, kind of, it's weird, too.
And we have got else to do, um, right, hopefully we'll do anything for you tomorrow, you know, Tuesday is a big day.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we got it taken care of, some of it was, um, in Mr. Mills's area and Mr. Cheatham's area, um, some of the streets are both, they have the same name. Um, it hadn't always been like that, they said they had some change here and there, so we, we didn't really go off that too much, maybe like Bay Street and Church Street, some of those, but they're telling us everything's straight, so, just let us, even if you all call, let, let us know if there was.
And that may look a lot. They will put them together, and it's clear, a lot of them, you know, very important comment, okay? How much should they have been with?
Um, Mr. Darrow could not be here, he stayed there, he didn't really have the other day, with the burn man, still, they.
Second.
Any special, question for the order, you will call, go, please?
Mr. Michael Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Carl Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Hall?
Yeah.
Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Alamo?
Yes.
Dr. Christie Oakland?
Yes.
President Louis Kim?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I've broken the note, signed it for these hours, at eight five, nine two five, nine two, you take, okay, we can have, have, you have, in eight two, for I L, two, for J L. Why was no recommendation coming from the town of Donald, please?
What recommendation?
Yeah, no, you know?
Not to make any change?
Change, why no change? Please, I think, like.
Planting is only took public input during the meeting, there was motion made to recommend no change to, to the jury, and passed seven to two.
The jury is on appeal, doctor. You just put the champion's order, you're like, a record appeal to the jury, right? Got a record appeal to the jury?
No, you have the final say on these, so, we can only make, planting is only gonna make the recommendation, they recommended not to make the change, that's what the motion was. And, and. Get it passed seven to two.
I think, if I understand that, change, I would recommend there's changes from, change, I come from town, you know, I come from town, you know.
You said, said anything, was it?
Yeah. You want a recommendation from who to change, so?
To not make any changes, for the land will remain.
I'm asking who made the recommendation to make changes?
To make, to change?
Yes.
Out of the substitute motion during the discussion, yes.
No, 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 no. He's asking if who told the jurors to change theirs, or if they missed the thought.
They've had to since, this is the second go around, again, that originally it went to, I think they were told by the building department, because they're trying to pull permits, to do what they were gonna need to do, and it was all agricultural at the time, and what they wanted wasn't, didn't match, didn't match agriculture, only part of their agriculture part would be forestry and trail rights, and that's the middle section of the property used for that.
So, what do they need to do now? If we deny this, like, there was plant in the zone recommendation, what do they have to do then?
That's it, there's no zone, it's state agricultural. There's no reason, I mean, there is no avenue.
So, they can hold the agriculture events?
They can hold agricultural events on the property, but they can't do concerts wherever it been industrial, and they can't do build their wedding, family reunion venue, where, which would have been commercial on the other side.
Well, all this happens to the jar, that's worth, and talk about in the community, there's another, a project that's, uh, similar that's coming up, and I wanted to make this clear, if we're gonna deny the jars, that other one is not coming up either. We're gonna do it, we're gonna be consistent, and we're gonna be fair.
I don't have a problem with that, you've already spoken about it, if you don't mind staying, so.
I'm just taking it away, I'm saying, oh.
That's good.
Well, I, I think, I mean, I'm just, you know, both sides of the road, at some point in time, we gotta do something about turning business away in East Bush, yeah, well.
Yeah.
Because, I wanna say this, because it's very passionate to me, most of these folks out here, y'all concerned, y'all neighbor, we ran a business from right here on sixty eight, that was going to screw three D houses, now, y'all don't know this, but we run them out of East Bush, yeah, parish, they went to Florida, and they're thriving, that's all I got to say.
So, do we have to pay a price for that?
Well, we, we also got, we also got to be careful, too, because you have people that's lived here their whole lives, and they bought property with the intention of being residential, not having to put up with all the everything, so we have respect for them, too.
I am, I'm respect, I'm making a comment.
I, I understand what you're saying, but we can't, we can't just deny them either.
Something might be?
It gets bigger, you're asking about that.
As you get to remind me that you have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, my name is Celeste Jar, and I'm one of the members of Jar family, but only thing, only, uh, thing I'm saying is that Buck Richardson had this place, he's been doing the same thing for over twenty, yes, ma'am, he has. He's doing, he's been doing the same thing for over twenty years, he passed, we bought the place, now this is a problem, that's all I'm trying to say. People bought around there when Buck was doing the same thing, I remember when I was a little girl, we having fairs out there, we having concerts out there, so, yes, Buck was doing the same thing, now, granted, he probably wasn't doing it according to code or whatever, but he was still doing it out there, and nobody had said anything because it was Mr. Buck. Now, we don't want it, now it's a problem, and it was being done, just on what I'm saying.
And, and, we're not trying to recreate a green event, any of this, our, we wouldn't have bought the property had we known this in the first place, we thought what we were doing was right, coming in, we all come, we all went to here, coming back home, we seen a business opportunity that was presented to us, and had we known that we'd have run serious here, we wouldn't have even bought it, you know, everybody ain't got three hundred, a lot of dollars to store away, maybe I would do a lot of, all right. So, we bought the property with the intent to run a legitimate business, that's why we tried to do the pop away, come to the board, not the board, we came to the board, we asked them, what would you do to get this business running? Every document you guys seen was something that we were told, put on the document, we didn't put nothing on there without being told to do so, we paid five hundred dollars, first time we denied, they said we had to pay another five hundred dollars, you do it another way, we bring it back, and got denied again, what is the right way of doing this thing, so we can make a legitimate and right decision, not on feelings, on, on law, and on facts, that's all that you need to know, what would you need to do to do it right? Because we went there twice, and got denied, can somebody let me know, what would you need to do to do it right? Because it's, it was the same thing we, they did it, same thing we're trying to do, nothing, not reinvent it with it at all. Y'all say you got new money in this town, if you made a commercial, that's what you're more than, it's a business, but we chose to do nothing, you complain about, you don't have money, but police department, that's revenue can come here, why we running business away? We don't wanna grow this town.
You have got one minute.
Mr. Jar, the zoning events, how long would you go wait, how many people?
They accompanied two hundred people, the business, the building, they accompanied two hundred people, and exactly the same, we were having, we built, was, uh, weddings, you know, that was two hundred people that were there.
You said that didn't include the people on the property?
Wedding events, and we're gonna do like, if people wanna have like meetings and stuff there, nothing that they see, two hundred people in that building, nothing, but if they say it's too close to residential, on, on, on the track that we're gonna put in, we were willing to move it all the way back over to A and B, put it in A and B, and it's no residence on that side. If you don't want it close to the suburban, the, I would say five hundred feet, you put it on the other side, and you're part of a mile or so.
I'm gonna get out of my phones, first of all, when he said yes, Mr. Buck had his, since I've lived there thirty five years, Mr. Buck had his little things, but it was not loud, it was not overbearing, you didn't have cars up and down the road, ripping and roaring, and motorcycles keeping everybody in the way, my mother-in-law's ninety years old, and when these people had this event in February, that poor woman stayed away till. that poor woman stayed awake till one o'clock in the morning because she had these people leaving, and a lot of them weren't, some of them were disrespectful on the motorcycles, ripping and roaring, and she goes round the corner across lane nine sixty-three. She's my mother-in-law. I told so bad for her that day Sunday. I've lived on that street, when Mister Buck had this, it wasn't that bad, even when they came down with, uh, the horses and stuff, it wasn't that loud. Unless you've truly been there and lived there, you would know that. Okay? Their music. I'm seventy-one, I had to go to the grocery store. I couldn't even get to Clinton, because the cops were telling me I had to go fifteen miles away around the world to get to Clinton. You don't pay my gas. I live with my social security number. Nobody else pays my bills. And it made me angry that I was told, I had to say, no, wait. I did three-quarters of a mile down the street, I'm not going around the world for them. The music was loud, they were parking everywhere, people were doing their business on the side of the road, girls running around, hats naked. The music was so loud, it was embarrassing. Unless you live in our area, they can't say that. Because when Mister Buck had that, we didn't have that, and it was during when he would cut down. But he also had that little piece of property right out here on Highway Ten and stuff, that they would go there, but it was never like that. And that is not right, that they're saying this, it's not my fault, that they were, you know, they were misrepresented by Mister Buck. That's not everybody else's fault. The problem here is, you're trying, he's trying to come in and do this. No, they were loud, they were nasty, they were parking everywhere up and down Highway nine sixty-three, and the people's property. I saw it with my own eyes. Sorry, no.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Kent Davis. I moved out in nineteen eighty-nine. Mister Richardson did not have any mess out there. When I bought him, I probably had cows on his land. There was no things, made it lay on, there was no things. But I'd say, he didn't have anything out there like this. But you gotta realize, there's no sidewalk that you walk there, and, uh, he want, he got some old property. He, he wanna take my driveway, he say it's only make, make for entrance, and take his driveway, make for exit. So we have one way in and one way out. So, he got more property, he had, he had a bit of some old property in his other bit, next to our lot. So, he wanna use those three lots he got for office. So he used that, and then he blocked us in. So how long did our driveway's first come? And the way to get out of there. So they think they own the driveway now, since they, they got the property, so they think they own the driveway to our southern bit, they say that is only bit. Also, he said there'll be fifteen hundred people out there. Fifteen hundred people own property, and two hundred people inside. Everybody drink and smoke. Everybody. Now, these people now come here, they gonna bring their cools and everything, what about, you know, who can check that? Who can check? If there's a chimney plant, or a emergency pump, you got a shit, how the police gonna get in there? How the ambulance gonna get in there? See, y'all not thinking about all that. But just for this, come in, empty the house. So I need my safety. They might guarantee, they can't guarantee that. Who can check, check the cools? Who can check get for weapons? You can't get enough scared to do that. Fifteen hundred people in a shooting breakout, or police department, what kind of business plan we have? You talking about a business? When you talking about a business, business, a venue, when people drink? Everybody free bring their own beer, own cools. Guns, cools, smoking. Something happened.
You have one minute.
That's all I have to say. Oh, one more question. When did y'all approve this to be Jarro, Jarro Event Center? When y'all made this a center, what day y'all made this a center?
We don't go by name, you know?
No, it's on, it's on menu. Jarro Event Center.
Cause we don't make, we don't make people.
That's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Mark Brown, less than three minutes. A lot of my neighbors are very emotional about this. It hits near and dear to our hearts. Mister Kent, you asked a question a little bit, why did the Planning Zone Committee deny? The only thing I heard Mister Richardson say was public outcry. I was at the meeting, I heard lots of discussion, including Bo and the other two jurors, two of them said, don't call their names. They, two of them quoted from a guidance document, I don't know what it was, I think it's one guidance document, they all spoke like it was something they had to zone about, so, I mean, so, I mean, there was a lot of discussion, it didn't go on about that. So it wasn't just public outcry, there was a lot of good discussion, and sad discussion, I listened to every bit of it. And, uh, a lot of my neighbors from Pikes Laker are not here tonight. Normally, remember, Bo represents the M T, he's working tonight, so he hasn't been speaking there, perhaps, well, so I'm representing, basically, from the Jarro Event Center, a lot of the families, many, many of the families to the west. When we say we adamantly oppose this reason, we, if you remember last time, our sheriff made a very impassioned plea about the last event that they had, and that he did not have the manpower to support and keep our parish residents safe. So, it's a lot more than just public outcry, it's a lot more than emotions. You have a very good Planning Zone Committee, a lot of business-minded people, and they, their people made their recommendation looking much deeper than we're talking about today, because we're talking basically about emotion right here today. But they made a lot of, um, a lot of good, sound business reasons why it should be denied. Thank you for hearing me, I appreciate your time.
And. Yeah, my part, I live quite close to where they want that, and I'd like to correct them. Buck, at the moment, had two events a year. They were loud, there were dark, like windows in my house, and it would go to at least midnight, and Buck would have offered an opposition, which we had discussed several times. And he asked me my opinion, and I told him, I did not like it, it wasn't legal. And besides that, who's going to enforce all the record laws and all the, uh, revenues that spoke, I was seeing the big revenues coming in from it. And people get, Buck, Buck's hard to think money, the parish ain't got a penny of it. So, what he did, did, and it was opposed to by several people, not just me. But he did it anyhow. And Buck comes over, why turn it down? I drove up there and remember one day, asking him to turn it down, and there was all some drunk men, they were standing up. He said, oh, we'll turn it down. Ain't nothing. And they had a deputy out there, the deputy just drunk as they were. So, nothing happened. And now it don't happen again. Well, I said, we should be holding about two towns a year. So, that's all I have to say.
I'm Sue March, and my sisters and I own the land right next to it. You go in one drive, thirty yards and hours is the next drive there. And Mark Kemp and I tried to go out there the night of the event, but we could not get down the road. It was just vehicles everywhere, and the next day, I went out there, and it was still some vehicles parked on our land, down our lane, and it was trash and stuff all out through there that we had to get cleared up. And, um, I really hate to see it be put in, because it will bring down the value of our land and the residents that are on either side and, you know, on that road and all. But mainly, when they were talking about moving from one side to the other side, with the side they gonna move it to, it's in my yard, basically. Yeah, I join like I am, I join you. Yeah. I'm promptly on right there. So.
But you know, there's no houses within.
No, there's no houses there.
Of that area.
No, but that's my land.
I'm understanding, Mister Park is the closest to that property.
Yeah, but if I want to build there, or my children want to build there, or we want to put a camp or something there, I, you know, I understand what you want to do. I understand, you gotta understand what I want to do, too.
You try, see, just like you say, what you want to do, I have not opposed to.
I know what I want to do.
I want to do the same thing.
But you would be putting all that into my property. But anyway, I'm speaking for my sisters and I, it's for us. Judy Miles, Paula Johnson, Jackie Andrews, I'm Sue March, so thank y'all.
No, recommend no town to die, like, within a year.
So, zone is regulation.
I said enough.
All the favor?
Uh-huh.
You're a call.
I just, I just have one thing. Now that you guys denied it, and it's, it's back to, back to the original agriculture. The training center is agriculture, trail rides is agriculture, what can we, cannot do on that property? That's one year for everybody to get aware.
You hear a little thing, the devil come? You know, you have, you have oil raising, you have ten years of time, you're sister.
There's a training center.
No, there's a training hall, there's a.
Yes, you did.
Bring it, bring it, you got right, you do it, you do it.
I train all the parts out there. You can add, it's a training, so you can be a training center and, and, and the trail.
What would that call?
My question, so is this thing to be coming up, and things happening in this area, we're hearing rumor of more of this. When are y'all going to address what can and can't be done, and put this into a law that's where?
The law is state, if it's a call, if anything to do with, you know, we take the head out.
Yeah, I'm probably.
They can't have, they can't have a free fall, they can't have a, a coin, that.
No, but if people come in, we might put a landfill in the, the breathing, if you had something set up in the law that's that, that talks about. When you, you, you're, they get by, or they're.
Is it all training, not working, is it there? Is it, is it not? About training, not the devil.
If you want a business, buy commercial land.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, I have great kids, and I don't want to have to limit the, the land and the.
Lady is still, especially, all over the place, and you're before.
Thank you.